Todd?
Getting beverage.
Calling this work session to an end order. We'll also hand it over to Dr. Staben.
Hello, everybody. And I would like the record to reflect that Todd Tulkey was extremely early tonight. Just for the record. Tonight, we're going to go over a couple of things. The first one, I'm going to just get us started and then you'll hear from a few people. But I wanted just to remind you of where we are in the process of developing our district priorities for the 21-22 school year. And then we'll move on to the attendance report from Dr. Knoll after we have a chance to look at this together. This is a PDF, and so I'm going to work from over here as we kind of scroll. As you remember, this has been kind of a year-long process of getting feedback from lots and lots of groups, parents, community, staff. And so what this really is, is a reflection of kind of the first things first as we begin our next school year and the things that we feel like are the most important work going forward. That doesn't mean that other things won't maybe enter into the picture and the work of the organization, of course, but when we say what our biggest priorities are, this document is meant to reflect that to our community and to our external partners as well as to our internal staff as we all can kind of see that picture together. But it doesn't go into the detail work and you've seen, you know, some of the things that outline the detail work over time and that exists. But we want this to just be a really clear document that guides our work. So we're going to talk through it. This should have a big draft watermark through it because that's what this is. It's still very much a draft. We were making changes even as of this afternoon and we're going to be going over this with general admin, with some other feedback groups as we just really work now on refining the language and the meaning so that it's clear and concise. So I'm going to walk you through just the beginning and kind of talk about the format of the document. Deanne and Carly have done a great job of taking what all of our teams have been working on, so departments have been working on this as people think through the progression of the work. And then all of that has to get scooped up over into a document that looks pretty and that does what we want it to do, and they've done a fantastic job of that. If you notice, here is our refreshed logo with our 150th coming up. We have kind of a refreshed version of what that looks like. Deanne will be rolling that out to all of our schools, to all of you. She has some nice things put together for how we can grab that and make sure everybody has access to that newer, freshened version. And then, of course, our statement below here that has been around for a long time and is still very applicable today. So when we get to this first page, really, this is just kind of the introduction of the board and of our district. And one of the things that we've really worked on with some of our community partners is kind of really define who we are, what our district stands for, and what that looks like going into the future. And so we have some statements here about what our district is and what we offer. And that came from a lot of people really kind of putting heads together and really just talking about the story of our district, what we aim to be, what we're proud of right now, and where we want to go. And we'll be able to give you more access to this document, but I know after tomorrow when we go to general admin, we'll have scratches and scrawls and changes just from that. So we didn't really want to spend a lot of time and effort on paper when we know this is still just very much a work in progress. Todd, sorry, you're booted off. We have Mark coming on. There he is. Mark, look, you already got your picture on there. It's official, so that's a good thing. So anyway, that introductory page and then a little bit more even narrative on our story and what we hope to provide for the experience that people have as they come through the Sioux Falls School District, whether that's adults and staff, or that's our students, or that's their families and our community members. So again, a couple of pages leading into then where we get into the actual areas of the document. And I'm going to whiz past a few things here just so you can see the layout and then I'll turn it over to people to articulate the content. So we start out with academic success and we've kind of kept those same buckets that we had in our last plan. Things are outlined there. At the end of each, well, let me back up. Sorry, forgot. Each one of these kind of has a belief statement that we talk about that we think is important to us. And Deanne, did I open the wrong version? Okay. No, did you load it on here? Oh, well, there we go. All right, we can switch over in just a minute. But this will have a belief statement. We rearranged a couple of things here, so this one is the same as this. It's not on the most updated version. Then we have the initiatives that are just kind of those big picture items. And then we go into explaining each of those in a little bit more detail and the actual action pieces that are going to go with those during the next school year. And so Teresa will go over this area in just a minute. The progress indicators are a little bit different than the metrics that we're going to be watching. The progress indicators really tell us if those things are getting done. We're going to have a back section to this document that's all of those anger metrics. Remember, we talked about kind of pulling those apart because we're always going to be watching graduation rate, reading and math, attendance. And so we have that in a little bit of a separate spot. When we put this on the website, we'll also have it kind of broken apart so that we can see it. We're going to have some videos that will go with each section with some narration. We'll have it translated. And then we're also going to do kind of a pocket version of it that each of you can have, so when you're out, you've kind of got a quick version of looking at our strategic priorities. And then when we do a progress update, we're hoping to put that into kind of a one-page format that then we can continually post those progress updates for our public and for our schools and staff as well. So that's kind of the format for each section. Then we move into the well-being section. And from there, we have our community engagement and then excellent staff. Oops, and I guess we added the one more is the effective use of resources, which talks about facilities and land and finances. So then when we get to kind of the midpoint of the document, this is something that Teresa and her team have worked on, this profile of a learner. And then after that, it will go into the section where we'll have all of those anchor metrics that tells us what's important for us to look at for our data all year long. Questions just kind of about the basic format? Well, that's good. Okay.
Looks good.
So Teresa, you want to come up and walk us through? And just be careful not to do that, by the way.
Yeah, why don't you? All right. So academic success was previously student outcomes. And so as we look at the new strategic plan, academic success is really to fulfill the mission of the Sioux Falls School District to educate and prepare each student in a changing world, really using those data-driven decision-making skills and differentiating learning through a tiered support framework. And you'll see that tiered support come into play in different areas as we go through the strategic plan. So our four initiatives are the Sioux Falls System of Support, and that's that tiered level of support for all students. And academic success focused on the academic area. And then Dr. Knoll's area focuses on more the well-being and the behaviors. Second initiative is future-ready learning and college and career readiness skills. Third is targeted professional development aligned with district priorities and then culturally responsive practices. So underneath. She gets that set up. Under, oh, yep. Let's stop right there. Right. So under the Sioux Falls System of Supports, we have proven practices that really look at the evidence of high-quality instruction in all classrooms based on research and identifying those best skills. We'll look at student achievement and we're going to monitor that and measure it frequently for progress for all students. And that means students all along that continuum, for students that need extra support and re-enrichment, enrichment to students that need extra interventions. So we'll work with all students on that. And then as we talk about those extra supports, it falls into the Tier One instruction, that core classroom instruction, Tier Two and Tier Three. And so Tier Two students would need, that'd be about 25% of our students, they would need extra support. And then Tier Three would need that intensive support with extra interventions. And then we get into the data under that tiered system of supports. And really, we're really looking at that student assessment and the evaluation program as it's designed to measure that academic achievement. We're going to use that comprehensive data across the district, looking at what's available and how are we using progress monitoring to measure the growth of those students to move them to that next level. And it doesn't matter where you're at as a student on that continuum. We're going to use that data to move you forward. And then, like I said, student growth is monitored and adjustments made throughout that programming. And that's our first initiative. The second one is future-ready learning, college and career readiness.
Teresa, let me just stop you there just for one second.
Yep.
Can you back up to the beginning of that? And you maybe touched on this. I was looking at a document with Deanne. One of the things that we heard over and over again was just the clarity that we need around intervention and supports. And so MTSS, you've heard us talk about, is a model. And to kind of avoid confusion of what something is, is it PBIS? Is it MTSS? Is it RTI? Is it, you know, all of these different models? What we've said is we need to have the Sioux Falls System of Supports because any of those strategies that might come from a variety of models or frameworks may be appropriate to use depending on what a student needs. When you call in another acronym, people think, oh, well, now we're not doing this other thing and we're doing this new thing. This is kind of the tie that binds everything's together, everything together. It's traditionally in a pyramid, and the model that we're looking at actually flips that pyramid on its side. So it's a continuum that we're looking at from students who need really heavy supports because they may struggle academically, all the way to the other end of that continuum where students are highly, highly gifted and really need intensive intervention there and that everybody gets the supports that they need and we have clarity about that. And so many of the things that are contained in there are the things that needed additional clarity, like benchmarking, like knowing what interventions are appropriate and making sure that everyone has been trained appropriately. K1 and 2 reading is an area that we've talked about a lot where we need more targeted interventions and progress monitoring. And so there's a lot that goes into that. One of the questions that we'll ask tomorrow is, is that clear? It's kind of heavy-duty work and we want to make sure that it has clarity about what it is that we're doing and where we're really aiming at for next year. But that is a foundational piece to just about everything else that we do. And we know if we get that right and get that better in place, that many, many other things gain better clarity and then have a kind of a progression over the next few years for the training that continues to come after that. So just want to make that. That's the biggest, heavy-duty-est piece of the whole plan.
And I will talk about the progress indicators that go along with that because when you think of the Sioux Falls System of Supports, that might help give you a little clarity to that. But we're going to establish district and building-level teams for that Sioux Falls System of Supports. So we'll start at the district level and develop that team and then really gather feedback from the administration and then help them develop their capacity and then they can push it out into their buildings. And then when we think about that process, it's not, you know, we want to jump to the due. And Dr. Knoll and Dr. Staben and I have talked about, the first thing they're going to want to do is they want to get it done. And they'll want to say, I want it done by April. We know it's going to take about four years for that complete implementation and training and process. And so it is a long process, but it's a good process to really look at what systems we have within the Sioux Falls School District because we have many of those systems, but they're not housed under that umbrella of MTSS. And so how do we bring our arms around that and really look at that continuous improvement cycle with our school improvement plan and our building professional development plans and really look at that process? And then continued professional learning for pre-K through 5 on research-based literacy practices that fits under that Sioux Falls System of Supports. So really some intense literacy training for our staff as they come back to school this fall. And then instruction for 6 through 12 research-based engagement strategies. We're going to work on that with our middle school and high schools. And then implementation of SIPs at first grade. That's a progress indicator for this area. And then the Pyramid of Supports for all students, making sure that's aligned and defined. And then that alignment and analysis of our balanced assessment. And that's a progress indicators for that area. And so now I'll move down to future-ready learning. And that future-ready learning is really looking at how do we help provide support and teaching and learning with that technology and infuse it in the classroom? We know that that flat panel displays are replacing our smart boards. And so they're engaging for students, engaging for the teachers, and we want to make sure that those tools transform that learning. We're going to ensure students have multiple pathways for career-connected learning, working with the community, and how do we connect what's available for employment for our students and careers with high school students and starting in middle school to define that pathway? And then looking at innovative programs and opportunities to capture interests of our students. That goes right along with the multiple pathways. And then opportunities to increase our language acquisition and cultural knowledge with our two-way immersion, our heritage speakers, and then the Spanish immersion, really how do we blossom those opportunities and pull on our community with that, the heritage speakers and bringing the families into that? And then looking at increasing CTE credential attainment with our high school graduates and then post-secondary planning to support dual-credit AP and CTE enrollment. So that's the future-ready learning. And then culturally responsive practices.
And then Teresa, why don't you just pause after that? Questions about the, let's scroll back up to the career.
Yep.
Questions about that section, future-ready learning?
I think much like we talked about in packaging and marketing is we have so many opportunities in that area, we just have not done a good job of explaining them all to both parents as well as counselors even in our district, knowing what all those pathways are.
Yep. And so really worked with the high school counselors and Christian Grunagre to really define those career clusters this year and then putting that out on the counselors' pages and then directing families to that. And so that's a piece that you'll see with Dr. Knoll on his piece of the counselors working on a website, and that will help that. So yes, you're correct, really helping understand. And our dual-credit opportunities are blossoming over the last couple of years and what we have available even next year. So you're correct. Better. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to add, I think the sooner we can get that information to parents and students, the better because some of those things are time-sensitive where they may have already taken a class.
Yes.
That now they couldn't take the dual enrollment.
Right.
And so the sooner we can start to educate those students, even as seventh and eighth graders, as they're thinking about what they might be interested in, can help to kind of direct either those CTE types of things or the dual enrollment.
If I remember, I'll intentionally remember, I'll send you one sample of the one-pager that they've put together for each of the career pathways. They look really nice. Those will get loaded on the new website. I don't know if they're on the existing one.
Not yet.
I think they're ready to go for that, so we'll look at how those are getting pushed out.
And the progress indicators for those two, that area is research and expand pathways and implement, really looking at JAG. And then culturally responsive practices. As we look at that, supporting learner-centered contests and experiences where students bring, when they come to school, we recognize and nurture their achievement and everything that they bring to the table as they enter the Sioux Falls School District. And we'll provide our page training that we provided for 10-plus years in the Sioux Falls School District, and that's that leadership training for all staff. And all staff will have that upon the completion of their first year. So June next year will be our first group to go through that as new hires. We've done that at middle school and high school for many years, but now we'll include all staff in that. So that way, we just make sure that's continuous. We'll have that district-level team continuing cultural responsive practices and instructional leadership. We'll conduct administrator listening sessions to really listen to the buildings and what their needs are. We'll have community and parent listening sessions also, so build on that feedback and the support. And we'll make sure that we're really going to examine course offerings at our high schools to make sure that all high schools have the same courses available to students. And then we'll alleviate any barriers to ensure students have high-quality district resources to learn for extracurricular activities. How do we support all students? And again, through listening sessions with parents and students. And then the targets for that, for the progress indicators, are training for all new hires, which includes the equity and access, and review our course offerings across the high school. Any questions on that area?
Can I just say how excited I was to hear the word JAG? Many, you know, two years I've been.
We're still in conversations with that.
Yes, I know, but I'm glad it's still out there.
Yeah, it's still out there. So we're still in those conversations, so. And then the last one is targeted professional development.
Hang on two seconds, Teresa.
Yes.
The other thing with, that I think is exciting, and we've talked about this, is, you know, there are some things that we heard in our feedback sessions about the needs of our families and communities and where we may have unintentionally created some barriers for kids to be able to access things. But one of the things that we want to be cautious about is before we go solve something, we want to make sure that we really know what the problem is or what the interests are or what people would just, you know, love to be part of reshaping or whatever that might be. And to do that, we just need to do a good job of listening. So we're kind of designing a month-by-month plan, and I'll run that in front of all of you because I'm assuming that some of you may want you because I'm assuming that some of you may want to be part of different sessions as we go out and do that World Cafe model. And then what we're trying to do is kind of thread through the entire organization. If we're asking a question of our families and parents, that we complement that with what we're asking staff, what we're asking students, so that we really get that nice, broad cross-section of feedback. And if we do that well all during the year, by the end of the year, we'll have some really, really good information that helps guide our work for the following years. We kind of look at the cycle. But we don't want to dive in and do everything before we really ask good questions. So that's part of our work next year. So just want to clarify that.
And my, the last indicator is targeted professional development and that really is to address the specific timely needs for all staff and opportunities for all employee groups so they feel like they belong and they have those professional learning opportunities and foster that future job aspirations to keep them within the Sioux Falls School District. And so the two areas that we'll really look at is sustainable data-informed course and training opportunities for all employee groups. So there again, gather information from the groups and find out what they need and what courses we can offer to support their growth. And the five-year Sioux Falls System of Supports training and implementation for our building leadership and the teams within their building. And that's the last area for academic success.
So that's a lot. And that's a lot on the plates because it's both the classroom work as well as the training and implementation of all of that. Dr. Fedden, who's joining our staff, has some great experience that was a really good match doing statewide implementation of a lot of the things that we're doing. And she's already been sharing some resources with us. So that's going to be, I think, a really good piece that gets set in motion in a lot of ways next year, but some really intensive work ahead of us. You'll see things that are, you know, they're not necessarily duplicated, but there are threads of some of the work that kind of play out in multiple sections. So you'll see some things in Becky's section with our focus on staff that you might have just seen in Teresa's section and same with this. So Dr. Noel, you want to go ahead?
So the second area that we look at here is the wellbeing. And the wellbeing, as you can see, really deals with the students and the staff on that feeling or sense of belonging and the supports that they need to be successful, both academically and personally. And a big part of that is we're going to continue to look at that and provide an environment that will focus on the academic, physical, the social and emotional wellbeing for all students and staff. So that's the overall umbrella, the area of wellbeing. There's four initiatives, the four initiatives on there. And this is going to be very similar to what you saw in the academics, but it will be the implementation of that Sioux Falls System of Supports. But this area will deal more with that behavioral, social, and emotional support. The second one initiative is to provide access and supports to students, families, and staff. And I'll talk through that a little bit more. These initiatives just give you the, the very straightforward headings and then I'll break it down a little bit as we go into the document here. The third area is to review and align our tier-three programs. Our tier-three programs are those behavior programs that pull the students out of the building. And we have started on that process here already and will continue through the, the summer and the fall and hopefully bring recommendations forward during the budgetary process in December. And the fourth area is to provide targeted professional development to equip staff to support the needs of all students. And so looking at that first one there is the Sioux Falls System of Supports. You've heard about this already in the academic area. This area will focus much more so on the interventions and the behavioral supports of that as well as the social, emotional. And so as we look at that, a couple of the key areas that we're going to work on there is provide the staff training for the implementation and programming, language, and expectations. So that's going to be that consistency across all buildings, elementary, middle school, and high school of those behavioral interventions and the supports that are used within the schools and as well as outside of the schools. The second one there, to implement that behavior intervention support to each school to establish consistency. But we also have to do that where we're going to build staff and teacher capacity to manage the student behavior and provide the instruction and the use of the, the positive social skills and the expectations we have for all students. So that we'll see that consistency across each one of our buildings. And the final area there provides student assistance team training because a lot of times it is a student assistance team that goes through and, and works with each of those individual students and the data and the information to see which supports will help that child and give those recommendations back to the, the teacher or that support team or the success coordinators. And so it's really to be able to do that training there and the effective tiers and the interventions that we will have. The second area is our student, staff, and family access supports.
I'm going to pause you there. Let's ask for questions after each of these sections. Any questions or comments with that section? Okay. Now, thank you.
Okay. And this second area here with the student, staff, and family access supports is really that health and wellbeing of our students and our staff, but it's also helping, but through the use of our community supports and to serve those in our community. But we'll make the resources readily available through our district efforts, community partnerships for both our staff and our students. If you look at that first line there, it's create an online single access for students to access the supports. And a lot of that is we have so many of these tools and, and interventions available for our students, but where can we locate that so that it'd be easily accessible at any point in time of the day or any day of the week for our students to be able to access and find that support that they need? And that's part of that re-intervention of the, the district website and then working with the, the counseling department to be able to establish that, a consistency for each one of our buildings. The high schools will look very similar in the same, the middle schools and the elementary so that our students have access. It's also going to be to implement a robust employee assistance program, which Becky Dorman and her staff is working on as well, which will be a much easier access point for our staff to be able to locate and identify the supports to be able to have a healthy and successful staff. And then to develop that community support center, which will be at Axteau Park Building. And Patty Lake Torbert and the social workers are, we identified a, a access point there at the Axteau Park Building where our community will be able to access that at an outside point so they won't have to go into the building and to be able to pick up and, and receive resources there to help them and their child to be successful at school. Questions on those things there with the student, staff, and family access supports?
I think it sounds good. I think a lot of times the, the barrier is just figuring out where to go or who to contact. So I like the idea of that single access for all those resources and not having to remember multiple passwords or, or things like that. So it's good.
It's been a point of difficulty with, you know, where do they go to pick up this item or, or whatever it may be? And, and if we have one central location where we have a social worker there to be able to help answer those questions, we're also going to have a clerical be there at all times to help with any of the paperwork or, or enrollments or whatever it may be, but they could stop there to be able to have that one point of access. And then that way people aren't confused as to where they need to stop at. And, and often we just don't have that space, storage space here at IPC where they may stop and we'll have much more of that access there at the Axteau Park Building. The next area there is programming to help all students succeed. And if you really look there, it's that development of the, and proactive and supportive approaches to effectively educate all students. And that part is very critical to the goal that we have mentioned multiple times of the Sioux Falls School District. And we're going to work to connect those students with positive adult relationships and appropriate programs and support systems to enhance the success of our students. And so you'll see there as we go down, the areas that we will do there is enhance our student support and resources for Native American students through the hiring of a teacher on special assignment, so a TOSA. And we have hired that individual and that's going to help with the alignment of the programming so that there isn't seen such a difference between elementary school to elementary school or in the middle schools and high schools, but really to be able to make sure that we have those services available at each one of our schools and it's equitable at each one of our schools. And then other areas that we can see that we have gaps and to be able to fill in those gaps. The next area there is implement changes to increase student attendance and we'll talk about that a little bit more coming up. But through each and every one of our feedback sessions, that is a significant area that comes up. Every one of those, each school identified attendance as being a significant concern. And so we'll talk about that in the report that you hear upcoming. And the final one there, implement enhancements of the behavior support programs to improve upon the success of our students in our alternative programs to be successful academically, socially, and emotionally. That's our review of that tier-three programming. And we have been meeting with elementary, middle school, and high school groups, separate groups. And there's a group of us that have been going through those listening sessions and we're identifying individuals that would be appropriate for that tier-three placement and then what supports we need to have at that tier-three placement that we don't maybe currently have or we need to enhance to be able to help those students be successful. So we're looking at, a lot of those programs are located at the Axteau Park Building, but the improvement of those, obviously the elementary is over at the Horace Mann Building. Questions on the programming to help all students succeed? And the final area, professional development. I better scroll down. Professional development to equip staff to support the needs of all students. Really there, the professional development is to help to keep our teachers informed. And we heard that through our feedback sessions as well. Some of that training they feel they're missing, that some of those interventions they could utilize within their classrooms to help those individual students, they may be lacking in. And the areas that we will, we will address there is one, provide professional development for teachers for their professional growth while being in effectiveness. Part of that is that page training and other areas of training that we will provide. We're going to provide training for counselors on social and emotional learning supports. And Patty Lake Torbert is working with the counselors to set up that training this fall or at least to continue that training this fall. And then provide consistent training for all teachers to build skills needed to assess, identify, and care for the needs of others. And so those are the three areas that we will work on to continue to develop and enhance with the Sioux Falls School District. Questions in that area? The indicators that we utilize to ensure that we are implementing the things that we have listed, of course, the implementation of the Sioux Falls System of Supports. That will include professional development. Our intervention, our consistent pyramid of interventions so the schools will be able to identify and utilize those interventions. And then consistent process created for student assistance teams. So that training and professional development with our student assistance teams. The creation of a support system, so we'll create that online single access and that'll really be done for both the employees and students. We'll implement a robust employee assistance program, develop a community support center. And that community support center is at the Axteau Park Building. Programming supports for at-risk students, the hiring of the TOSA, which we have completed that hiring now, develop and monitor the program for our Native American students. The number of students classified as chronically absent, we will work to reduce that at each level and I'll show you that report coming up here. And then implement behavior programming review recommendations. That'll come from that tier-three review that we're completing at this point in time. And then the professional development completed by all teachers, the equity training, mental health support and recognition training, and the personal wellbeing training for staff. So those are the indicators that we will utilize to ensure our, our staff is prepared and that we have those resources available for our students.
I know something I hear a lot from teachers is they, they appreciate the professional development, but it's not always in that category or that topic that they feel they would most benefit from. So I think to whatever extent we can make that a little bit more personal, whether it's by subject or by grade level or by, you know, behavioral versus social, emotional, whatever it is, I think teachers are at different places. And so having almost like a smorgasbord of options for them that are still effective that they can maybe come back and share with the rest of their building or their team or whatever is great because if they can go and learn it and then if they can turn around and kind of teach it, then it's really ingrained and, you know, they really truly did learn that and they're probably going to be more passionate and invested in that information.
Backup in Teresa's section, it refers to that because we heard that as well and that diverse opportunities. And what are the must-dos because it's a requirement for one thing or another? What are the need-to-dos because it's connected to an initiative? And what are the I-want-tos and interested in doing kinds of things? And then part of what we've been working on too is how do we capture that so that if we want to have a group of teachers helping other teachers or providing a workshop or something, how do we know who has added expertise in that and additional training? And so we're looking at the platform that we're going to use to kind of begin housing all that because we lose it sometimes when people have done great trainings. The other thing that we hope to bring back that I understand was once a big part of things that kind of was lost over time for a variety of reasons is having a good professional development opportunity in the summers for teachers that lead it for other teachers. And that just gives us another way of calling up those experts and involving them because you're absolutely right. And, and just the richness that comes from sharing practices, we know, is a great way to enhance retention and that overall sense of being a vital part of our district. So point is well taken.
And I would like to add to that also just having the follow-up. Once you've had the training and then committed for six months or a year as a teacher to have that, okay, now I want to know how to do this. You know, they can find tune it even more in having that follow-up, especially if it's district-led initiatives. I think it would be great with.
I will kick off with community engagement and remind you that everything you're seeing in this document is a result of the community engagement that we've embarked on for the past year. And so all of those individual meetings or group meetings at schools and our parents and students and staff really have provided us with the framework for this document that you're seeing today. And we believe that when all stakeholders, those relationships are intentionally cultivated, then students will grow through hands-on learning experiences, work and career opportunities. And also a strong school-community partnership allows us to sort of show our students what the community has to offer for their future as well. So they're not thinking necessarily about leaving Sioux Falls, but look at all the great job opportunities that are available here in Sioux Falls. So initiatives under community engagement, looking at our strategic partnerships. We benefit so much every single day from those partnerships, large and small in our community, from our largest employers to the mom-and-pop type shops that are willing to take on an intern or a job shadow or what have you. And so those strategic partnerships are very important to the success of our students and we want to continue to cultivate those. Second, our stakeholder listening and learning sessions, as Dr. Sevam alluded to, will be going out into the community, using the World Cafe model to have conversations with our community and really do more listening than talking to hear what they want to say and what's most important to them. And then again, SFSD experience. We want to be the best school district in the nation. How can we be that? We need to develop a, a culture of customer service like no other. And so that really talks about, or takes the words off the page and really walk the walk, not just talking the talk. So under strategic partnerships, really looking at strengthening those partnerships, looking at our existing partnerships, documenting expectations and desired outcomes from those partnerships, and also getting a better understanding of the duration of the intended partnership. How long can we expect this partnership to last? What are we providing as part of the partnership and what is the, the business community or our partner providing? And then also as Dr. Noel and, and Dr. Boyson have said, developing new and existing community partnerships to enhance the opportunities for students, staff, and families. And there are a lot of different opportunities available there even through, you know, with this access center for families and just a variety of the mental health supports that we already have partnerships on. And just always looking for those, those opportunities that might be out there to strengthen what we can provide to families. And then also engaging strategic partners and forward-thinking workforce development initiatives to meet the needs of those current and future employees, excuse me, employers. As you know, we're a very involved member of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and we hear about the business needs, the employment needs out there. There for a while, the past, probably the first two weeks in May, I had probably six phone calls a day from businesses looking to hire employees and seasonal, part-time, you know, full-time from graduates. And so we know that's a huge community need and strong schools will help develop students to become great employees. Under the stakeholder listening and learning, as we mentioned, we'll be going out with the World Cafe model, really into the neighborhoods where people are comfortable so that they can come to a meeting spot that is known to them and feel comfortable having conversation about what is most important to them and their families. So really wanting to gain that feedback and continue this process that we've started. So really wanting to gain that feedback and continue this process that we've started with community engagement, and thereby doing increasing staff and student satisfaction. So we want to continue to listen. And also, our principals told us that they needed some additional support with some of the communication tools and the models that we've introduced to them, to better utilize those, and to know exactly what to use those communication tools for. What is best to use our ParentLink Mass Communication System for? What is best, what kind of communication is best through REMIND? And those other tools that we've invested in. So we'll be doing some additional training on that. And then the SFSD experience, as we alluded to, really wanting students to feel like they belong, there are opportunities here, they have access to whatever programs, and that they're included. So in leadership and culture, you know, we want students to have access to school opportunities, of course, but also to community opportunities that are available, so that they can grow in their own personal endeavors, and end up seeing a greater value for their educational experience. Under academic excellence, then, really taking those real-world experiences and melding our curriculum with our community. Collaborations and connections, strengthening the partnerships to benefit all. And again, community engagement, listening, understanding, to improve even more. And support and belonging, each student should feel supported in their academic pursuits, and we want to welcome all of our stakeholders, bear ideas, and call them equal contributors to the educational process. Our progress indicators here are recognition of existing partnerships. This fall, we'll be doing a partnership recognition breakfast, inviting those folks in and giving them a little more time and recognition for all they do and all they bring to the table for us. Completion of intensive training for administrators on those two-way communication systems. And then, of course, continuing to capture feedback from our World Cafe events, and just ongoing engagement with our stakeholders, as Dr. Stavam mentioned, really asking questions, not just to one group, but really looking at maybe month-by-month, a theme on the topic of attendance, or on the topic of transportation, graduation rates, those types of things. So asking the questions and really listening to those responses, and using those responses to inform future initiatives. And then just the overall sense of well-being and feeling that our students get, and our parents and our staff get. Do they feel supported? How do they feel with the professional development that's been provided to them? Do they feel like the Sioux Falls School District is indeed working hard to become the best district in the nation? The other thing I'll just mention here is that hopefully, along the way, you've noticed some of these new graphics that are being displayed in our document here. And those graphics will be part of a rebranding effort that the district is embarking on for this fall. So part of all of this reveal of a big strategic plan will be coupled also with our 150th anniversary, as well as a launch of a new website and that fresh and new logo that we're super excited about. Any questions for me on community engagement?
One of the things we still have to talk about that we haven't landed on for sure yet is that last bullet that talks about perceptual data and how we're going to capture that. Is that going to be, you know, a survey item? Is that asking the same question in, you know, multiple student groups and of parents? And part of that is thinking about, what did we know before COVID? What was part of that, you know, climate survey that we would give yearly? And what might look and feel different coming away from a year of COVID, when people weren't able to engage in quite the same way? You know, I have a lot of parents this year who weren't able to be at their child's school in all the same ways that we would want them to be. So we're trying to be kind of thoughtful about that, and we're going to ask that question tomorrow. You know, it's hard to capture the perceptual data of 24,000-plus students and all of their families, but I think there's some good indicators that we'll be able to choose from that, and then we'll put that in the anchor metrics section, but we just haven't landed yet.
Next up is Becky with staff excellence.
Thank you, Deanne. Okay. Our excellent staff. One thing that we know that to develop excellent staff, that's going to take some time. We believe that all staff, from our entry-level staff to our most experienced teachers and administrators, need to be growing and learning over their careers. And that's something that we definitely want to support. We know that prior to, when we focus on staff growth, they feel valued and they increase engagement. A lot of the things that are in my excellent staff section have also been covered in Dr. Nold and Dr. Boyson's section as well. One piece that I do wish to lift up is the development of our non-teaching staff. We talk a lot about developing our teaching and certified staff, but the other half of our staff need developing as well. So we will have three initiatives that really cover a lot of ground. We're going to build professional capacity. We're going to focus on staff recruitment, recognition, and retention, and then encourage staff innovation, knowing that a lot of times, big and great ideas don't always have to come from this building. People with their feet on the grounds, out in our schools, have got some great things to share with us. So that's something we want to encourage and support. As far as building our professional capacity, lifting off the page is developing a program for our non-teaching staff. How can we meet their needs? We also have a custodial mentoring program that has a lot of promise that we want to continue to foster. We have a whole cadre of substitute teachers who have a wealth of varied backgrounds from our community, whose skills can be used in our schools. So how do we cultivate that, building capacity to serve students? And then we also have a new program, Cheers for Peers, that engages our education assistants to aspire into being a leader within their own group. And so that offers a lot of promise as well in building our professional capacity. Oh, sure. Thank you. We know in the Sioux Falls climate right now that the best applicants have a lot of choices. We're facing that currently in almost every role that we try to fill. As Deanne talked about, brand and building our brand, that is going to have to be something that we do, so that we're positively recognized by staff as an employer of choice. So there are initiatives in the area of recruitment, recognition, and retention are very important. Some of these key functions are to be, to continue with our diverse staff recruitment from our own ranks. So that would be our adult teacher-mentor program and the student-teacher mentor program, plus a new and upcoming partnership with the district and University of South Dakota, and a teacher pathway to make accessing college easier for staff, or for students, and giving them internship opportunities that work with their college and life schedule within the Sioux Falls School District. So they're earning money and going to college to hopefully become educators for us. We want to provide training to our support staff to build a culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We have a wonderful Staff Stars program that we want to continue, as well as bolstering our employee milestone recognition program, our teacher-mentor program, and then our Cheers for Peers onboarding program for our EAs, which I'm sure you are going to hear more about as we roll that out. In the area of staff innovation, we want to continue to encourage our employees to take risks and seek innovative solutions that support students and the work that they do. The funding from the big ideas that come from staff will be through the district's program enhancement projects and the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation. Some of you may remember the Quality Fairs that we used to have, where people would come with great ideas, and we would try them out and fund them. So this has got a resurgence of that program. So I'm looking forward to working in that and seeing how that goes. Our progress indicators. If we are on target, employee retention rates won't lie. We will see staff stay. So if we get it right, staff will stay.
Please scroll down.
Oh, sorry. We also know that seeking employee feedback is a powerful tool, and we plan to do that. We will continue to monitor our employee ethnicity statistics. And then also, if the big idea staff submissions is a hit, we know that we're getting that right as well. So those will be our progress indicators.
That's kind of a crowdsourcing technique that we're going to be trying, and it might be for big things, but it also might be for small things. One of the values of doing the feedback sessions at all of our schools was just hearing the richness of ideas of people who see a need and have an idea for fixing things or adding value to something. And so we're going to put a process to that, so that we have kind of that continual ability to cultivate the ideas of our people.
I think one thing that I didn't see specifically on there, which I'm sure is embedded in there somewhere, is the ability for our staff to be able to visit either other schools to learn from other classrooms or even other districts. I think we talked one time about how amazing it is, how many of our teachers and principals and other staff members who grew up in Sioux Falls and have lived here forever. And that's awesome, and that's great. That's a credit to us, I think, to being able to hire them. But I think what it does do is it limits our ability to have outside ideas and thoughts. And so if we can somehow, either by visiting, you know, schools that are close to Sioux Falls, but might have different culture, or different teaching methods, or things like that, I think that you can really gain a lot by observing somebody else and talking to somebody, and now you actually have, you know, almost like a pen pal or a peer that you could reach out to. And so however we could encourage that for teachers who may be interested in such a thing, I think is important, too, finding people who have creative ideas. Maybe it's a younger teacher, maybe it's an older teacher, maybe it's somebody that's taught in multiple different grades or different programs that has seen things work really well, and could share some of their ideas and resources with our staff as well.
Yep, that's good. We've talked about that. I don't know that that's clear through there. We've talked about it through mentoring opportunities and kind of how we do our walk-around work and feedback processes, but we can think about that and where that layers in. Sometimes people refer to that as job-alike visits and those things, so yeah. Good, thanks. All right, I'll turn it over to Todd.
Thanks. The final priority is effective use of resources. We've always prided ourselves on being efficient in what we do. We build an efficiency factor into our budget every year, and we usually exceed that. So we think if we continue to use them effectively and strategically, it'll result in optimal conditions to do all the other wonderful stuff you've heard about before I got up here. So our four initiatives under effective use of resources is facilities, transportation, child nutrition, and fiscal responsibility. So under facilities, we've got our priority to work with community partners to provide space to improve after-school opportunities for middle school students. Collaborate with city planners and local developers to determine Westside Elementary location, you know, that's coming up. And then also, future facility needs for 2025 through 2030, because our plan basically ends at 2025. Work with city and county agencies to direct surplus house and land to further affordable housing initiatives. You know, we have buying up houses for different projects throughout the district, and Jeff has already worked with folks at CCOG to repurpose some of those houses in other parts of the city. And work with STC, or Southeast Tech, and other community partners to repurpose the use of the former New Tech building. Those kids moved over, or are moving over to Jefferson, of course, on that campus of Southeast Tech. Questions about facilities?
Would year be considered in the 2025, 2030?
Yes, right. So we're trying to purchase property to be able to place the house, and then, yeah, that would be, that was kind of the plan in 2018, was to look at what to do towards about, at the end of about 10 years. So, yep.
Perfect. I just want to make sure for the public.
So, under transportation, we, I think you all know that SBI was bought out by a larger company, and Harlow's, and they brought some innovation already to it. So we're going to try to implement a transportation GPS system that will increase student safety and provide parents with real-time route information. So you can just have an app, and you can go look and see where the bus is at, and see where your kid got off, and all that good stuff. Research and outline an action plan for needs-based transportation based on attendance concerns. We have some pockets that would not normally be in our bus areas, but there are significant attendance issues. We've run a few pilots, and we want to try to expand that. And then the third one is implement busing for before and after-school activities to accommodate students who have limited opportunities for participation, because they can't get home if, or to school early, if the bus is, if there's not a busing opportunity. Any questions on transportation? And then under child nutrition, improve meal quality to increase student participation at all levels. And that is very broad, and you can kind of see some of the items in there. One of them is offer versus serve at elementary schools, where instead of kids getting a full plate, and whether, you know, they're not going to eat green beans, or whatever it is, you let them pick. They just have to pick certain things, and then you don't have to, you're not going to have nearly as much waste. That's one of the examples under that. Develop an onboarding in-service training program to ensure all child nutrition staff are proficient in current nutrition and technology practices, really beefing that up. Implement choice in second entree at elementary locations, so maybe they can pick a second entree and have that. Currently, that's available at middle school and high school. Provide more variety in meal choices at secondary locations, kind of beefing up those items that are served out there, so the kids can eat more of what they like. And establish a student advisory group to gain recommendations and feedback. That's another one under that. Next one is develop an, oh, I already said that one, sorry. Develop a rolling five-year facility, technology, and equipment plan to ensure capital items are not a barrier to providing delicious and nutritious meals to all students. They've had a five-year plan, it hasn't really been followed, so they're really going to dive into that and work with the experts. You know, they've got specialists out there, and see what's aging out and whatnot, so that program will be beefed up. Establish a community outreach program to promote student wellness and healthy eating outside of the school day. And then implement sustainability program to recycle milk containers. We think we're actually going to be able to pull that one off. It's been a 20-year effort or so. Any questions on child nutrition?
Well, I think it's great, you know, this, we get complaints often about the food and so forth, but what our district does and with the resources they have, it's great. And this summer, we all saw that we're providing at 10 sites the free meals for students and so forth. So people have to realize you have to weigh the number of people we feed and what we can do with that, but we always are trying to improve that, so. And if there's ways, also, we look at with that waste, if there's compost or anything like that, we could start doing that as a community, as well, that'd be great.
I think our new director out there thinks we can reduce the waste by doing some of these strategies. And then, of course, you're always going to have milk cartons, and that's the one we can get right away. Anyway, up and going.
I think a few of our schools have community gardens, too. So, I mean, I know that's not a direct impact to, you know, us serving food, but what a great way for...
The compost.
Yeah, or even for students to be able to take some fresh fruits or vegetables home with them.
Yeah, or even for students to be able to take some fresh fruits or vegetables home with them or learn about gardening that they could maybe then be more knowledgeable and have those skills to do that at home too. So I don't know how that fits in or if it does, but just thinking, I know Patrick has, I think about Patrick Henry, but I think there's other maybe elementary schools that, you know, use that as a great learning opportunity as well.
And then last, but certainly not least, fiscal responsibility. We're going to make a plan to reestablish the finance action network every five years. So next time it'd be in 2025. They look at our finances. They make sure that we're efficient, we're doing what we need to do, and they help us strategize about ways to enhance resources going forward. So have that regular, I think they've met four or five times since they were first established, but it was never really a regular process. Then maintain favorable financial comparisons to area districts and national peer districts as established by the National Center for Education Statistics. That'd be part of that'll be part and parcel of that group too, but we'll watch those every year. And then utilize all available mechanisms to minimize new and reduce current general obligation and capital outlay bond interest expenses. We always try to watch that. We know, you know, we look at our what our levy is and then we always try to do what we can do. An example of that is we've taken advantage now the last three or four times of that state aid intercept program where if you pledge your your state aid as collateral against your your loan, then you can get a better rating from the standard and cores. So that's fiscal responsibility. Any questions on that? And then progress indicators real quick. Increase the number of students participating in after school programs. Increase the number participating in middle school extracurricular programs. Increase the average daily attendance of students in conjunction with the new needs based transportation program. Increase student lunch participation from the 2021 rates. Rank in the top quartile for lowest homeowner property tax obligations of our neighbors. We're pretty good at that right now. I think we're second best. And the number of residential family units added to the city rolls from disposed district purchases, houses and land parcels. That goes along with that. That first one we talked about facilities. Any questions on those? All right.
Yeah, so that's a lot. And our teams have been doing a great job of really kind of trying to synthesize and prioritize because we have still lots to do from all of our feedback, but these are the the first things first and like I said, some of them are foundational to things that come after it. But all of this is that continuous improvement cycle. And so we've planned this is then coming after the study part, the due part, and then we'll be acting on these things and then we'll keep repeating that. And so as we come back and report to the board, some of these things will continue for a number of years. Others will begin to pull in the kind of a next version of something or the next stage of it as we look at what this document will look like the following year. And so we have to think of this as a living document that will guide our work each year, connected over a number of years, but really gives us an idea of what can we expect to happen in a given year. And then how does that look along the way? So after we get some more feedback on it, we'll keep kind of shaping it into what will become that final version. I'll share it out with you to just see if you see anything else that's missing, should be added, taken away. And then the intent is to have this in its final version in July, ready to roll out to everybody in August with the beginning of the school year.
Thank you. And if people have concerns or comments or questions, they can reach out to any board member or Dr. Savam and add their input to that. I don't believe there's anybody here for public input on that. So any other questions or suggestions perhaps? Seeing that we can move on to student attendance.
A lot of the sad news, laborers, two individuals that text me building the first quarter of their pandemic report this last year and some of the disappointments they had.
Before you start on that, do you think that is COVID related, like that since school was let out at the end of the year and then starting a new year with all the other things related to that or?
No, I wish it was. There's a lot, a lot of other factors. I'll hit on a few of them. I'll go through fairly quickly. This is really, this report is really going to be to give the the board an overview of some of the things that we're seeing. Has obviously a concern with attendance that impacts their academics and and the involvement of the students in the school system. So I'll go through a few of these things fairly quickly, but at least highlights the reasons why we need to continually address and and address a few specific areas that impact us with the attendance with the Sioux Falls School District. The first part of it, this comes from the the state with South Dakota law. And really the key part of it, the definition of the attendance when we deal with the truancy is a student needs to regularly attend. And so that's really the state. Once they're that qualifying age, they need to regularly attend. We look at it in the Sioux Falls School District. And we look at part of that in in the policy J H D R, the regulation piece of that. 10 or more absences in a school year is considered to be excessive by the Sioux Falls School District. And so obviously highlighting that part. And then the very last piece of that that comes out of the the policy and obviously this is not the whole regulation. But when the student absences are deemed excessive, 10 or more days, schools will require verification of absences from a doctor, dentist, or other medical professional. We're going to work on some of those things. I'll talk about that just briefly coming up. Been meeting even today with our tech department to go through to see what things we can do in an automated way to be able to keep parents notified and and working with our social workers in some meetings that we've had over the last couple of weeks. Another part of that goes into based on that, what does that really mean for us that we look at for that attendance piece? Well, we know that it needs to be the minimum 10 days and we look for that through the policy. And another part of it, it really needs to be through our state's attorney and the judges that sit there with the with the juvenile courts to be 10 unexcused days. Well, a few years ago, we didn't necessarily go to the excused, unexcused, it's the absences that we report out. But we go through the truancy process or the failure to send process. We're looking at those that hit beyond those 10 days where we told the parent and informed a parent that you really need to have your child there in school unless you have a medical note, medical documentation or something very similar to that. Some of those could be other things with social workers or or court systems. But they need some type of a verification. That way they're just not not able to continually excuse their child. So really looking at that 10 mark is where we're going at with a point of truancy and attendance. Now you also look with the South Dakota Department of Education. They also have a coding in there that goes with chronic absenteeism. And that chronic absenteeism, they're looking at that 10% as far as the days of absence, once they're enrolled, 10 or more days. So the 10% really for the Sioux Falls School District, if you look at that over a year, there's 174 student days, but you take out those that that deal with parent teacher conferences and in-service, that's truly about 170 days and 10% of that then that's 17 days. So when a student misses over the 17 days, the Department of Ed is really calling that as a chronic absent student. And so that's a key numbers that we're looking at when we're going through and doing some revisions with our attendance and our approach towards a truancy and failure to send. Some key pieces that we have and some of these are in place now or these are all in place now and a few of them that were revised. Currently, we work and there's an automated or generated letter that goes out for five and eight days and and I often get calls on that and wow, I got a five-day letter and but you know my child was gone. Those five and eight day letters, they're auto-generated and they're for any absences. So even if it's a medical note, medical documentation, anything like that, it's still going to generate just to inform a parent that they've been gone five or eight days. And then we note that it flags it in the system. So we know they've been sent that letter. Once a child gets those 10 days, then the school generates that letter and sends it. And that's where we get that notification that now you need to have a medical documentation to be able to have a child excused. That doesn't include school sponsored activities. Any of those type of things would not be included in that. Or anything that's dealing with a school, school sponsored. And so then we look at that 12 days where is the first time we could file that truancy of that citation? And really, it's just like a speeding ticket. They get a citation for being truant from school. At 15 days, there's a piece in the state law and specifically deals with funding, but it's also a drop date where if a child has an attendance for 15 consecutive days, and I'll talk about that a little bit. 17-day attendance letter, that's where we'd be looking for that second truancy citation. And then the 22 day is where we'd go to the petition to the courts. And truly some of the differences in there now, especially this year with the new state's attorney that's working through these is they're starting to defer to go to diversion right away with those students at that first initial date that we're sending in for truancy filing. And they're looking at those 10 days of unexcused. And so it's changed a little bit of our system. So that's what we're going through now to re revise some of that so we can still hold our our children accountable for attendance and our parents accountable for the attendance of their child. But to be able to fall in line, we look at courts are requesting and the state's attorneys requesting. I'll talk a little more on that. One of the reports that comes in with South Dakota stars, just to give you kind of a general overview of where the attendance sits with the Sioux Falls School District this time. Got to look at a five-day or five-year look back on that. And again, that chronic, that's at 10% absenteeism. The warning goes really at that 5 to 10% range. And so you're looking at about eight to 17 days, eight and a half to 17 days. And then the good, they're less than that 5% of the days that they've been enrolled being absent. And so looking at a five-year chart here, so the first one here, you look at the high school, the red area is again that chronically absent group. And so in that chronically absent group, if you see 16, 17, it's about 25% that would hit in that chronic range. Drew to 30% in 18, 19 dropped to 27%. 19, 20, everybody had perfect attendance for the fourth quarter. If you go through that, that's because of with the COVID and we went to remote learning, there's not daily attendance taken. So it's a skewed year. And still with that, even leading up to the through the third quarter, we had, you know, we're sitting about 18 and a half percent. And that still will count that whole fourth quarter. So that means those students missed more than, they'd have to be about 15% going through the third quarter of absenteeism. And then you go to 2021, it's skewed there as well because of the number of students that were virtual. And that's where we'd have to have to not continue to do their work after so many weeks, we would have to call them back into the building. But up through there, their attendance is still counted as if they're in attendance until they're called back into the building. And so that's still a skewed number in there. So you could argue going through there that the last two years of data, still significant absenteeism with those chronic groups. And obviously our largest percent of the students are attending or in that range where it's less than the chronic. But the numbers going up through there and skewed to the last two years. So what I did, first of all, this one's the high school. We go to the to the middle school numbers are are better and you go to the elementary, they'll be improved as more. But the same things with those skewed marks there. And yet in the middle school still this past year exceeded the previous three and it was two middle school principals that had had just messaged me that they were surprised of the significant increase in their absenteeism this year. And then if you go to the elementary and obviously those numbers are still small. But when you put it in a perspective of our number of students, so 25,000 students or under 25,000 students in the district. And keep in mind that the the fourth quarter of the 1920 school year in same way this school year with the with the students that were in the virtual academy, that's skewed some of that. I still went ahead and looked at a five-year average on those. And if you go through just on the five-year average or percent, that means each year there's about 811 on the average elementary students that would be hitting that chronic range of absenteeism. About 677 middle school students, year after year, that would be in that chronic range each year. And then about 1700, so about 3,200 students out of our just under 25,000 are hitting that chronic range of absenteeism, which is a significant issue when you're talking about their academic progress.
Good question. So I was at that meeting this morning with Mal Justice and they put up the numbers of actual cases of truant filings and it's obviously much lower. Do you get into that, why there's such a discrepancy?
There's a significant discrepancy in in part of the filings and it's diverted. So it goes diversion, does it come back in through if they fail their diversion? Which is is part of an area that we need to sit and discuss with the the courts and the state's attorney's office of what our expectations and we did go through and do that here four years ago and laid many of those things out and some of those things change over time with new individuals working through the court system. Not all these will always be filed on. It depends on how many they've missed in a point of time. But many of these, because especially when they're asking that there's 10 unexcused, well, we need to at least get to the 10 days first before we tell a parent that they need to now provide documentation. So I will move that out 20 days that they're getting to absenteeism, which are already before they're even going to have the the truancy filed, they're already to that chronic state for the whole year.
Yeah, because everyone's 61.
And that, we've sent in a much larger number than that because we submitted into the state's attorney on a spreadsheet now. The numbers are way beyond that. And so no, that's nowhere near close to the numbers that we submit that we have concerns with that should be filed with truancy.
And I think that's what is important. One of the reasons during the homeschool bill issue that became important was they kept saying, well, we're closing the truancy loophole. And I think it's important for the public to know that Noah just made the loophole bigger because it's not being closed right now in the system that's working that there's a memorandum of understanding between certain organizations. And now we're also responsible as a district for these homeschool students who we don't even have a record of. So this is, this is a big issue.
It's a significant issue. There's not a closing of the loop of overall attendance. The accountability piece that that falls in line with that has become more and more difficult and those diversions don't count in those that will actually go through as a truancy.
And and I'm not saying we should go arrest all these, but obviously the programs that are in place for diversion are not currently working to stop.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. It's a, it's, it's a collective. It's a collective will of our school district, our families and our community to keep kids in school. And that has to be proactive. It has to be with how we get kids and families connected to all of the positives in our school with activities, with engaging instruction. And then it's also the reactive part of how we let people know. And you know, one of the things that I've heard over the course of an entire career is, well, my child's absent, absence was excused. And we understand that. There are times when you need to be gone. There's illness, there is vacation, there's all those things. But regardless, that's a day out of the classroom. And the more of those days a child has, the more at risk they are for academic failure or less progress than maybe we want them to have. And so I'm hoping that as we look at all of the ways that we can proactively work at this, we also have all of the partners that already are supporting us, working with us as well. Because it's collective, it's, you know, a parent who may be struggling with a job situation that has a child now that's maybe just become school age and now you're trying to navigate school. Or you've moved from another community and you don't know what are the ways that I can ask for help if that transportation piece is becoming a problem. And if I have no neighbors or no relatives, who do I call if my car breaks down or any of the hundreds of of things that come up? So it's not just a a school district issue, it's a lot of hands that have to come around this.
And it is. It's a community thing. It's a something we need to address as a community because it impacts our employment. It impacts the the level our students are educated, our our well-being, our happiness of life just within our community here. And that education piece starts that. So truly, when you look at that, that 3,204, that's a yearly average. Not a five-year cumulative, it's a yearly average. And I think that's even skewed low because of the past two years. The same thing here has been provided for you in the in a chart form. So you could look at that as well. I won't take the time to talk through each one of these individually, but the same numbers that were utilized for the the graph was utilized in this chart. And so did that for elementary, middle school and high school as well. The next part of that, I had mentioned a little bit earlier, there's a piece in in the South Dakota administrative rule that any student has an unexcused absence of 15 consecutive school days. A lot of that hits at the beginning of the year when a student is supposed to be enrolled in the school and they have not attended. We've made attempts to to contact family, send social workers out to try to to see at the home and the residence. And there's just not, then after that, we're supposed to backdate and drop on the last day of attendance. Well, that dropped them at the beginning of the year. That impacts as far as the funding piece because the state would not be paying for somebody that's not going to be enrolled and attending in school. It carries throughout the school year. And those are the numbers that have been dropped for that lack of attendance. Now that, for someone at the beginning of the year, we often find out much later that they've moved or moved somewhere else. There's some of those individuals that are just not attending school. We try to report those in then to as far as a truancy. And then others that have been through this year, they're just not attending. They're no longer attending. We report those as well in towards a truancy and and that may go through as a diversion as well if they have time to be able to get to those. Part of that is they become so overwhelmed at times that even this past year, the truancy, we were notified in 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 April, actually at the end of March, but beginning of April, that no longer would truancy charges be taken for the remainder of the year. Well, there's still two, you know, a fourth of the year still to go.
And summer school.
Yeah. And and so, I mean, that part of it just is impacted that way. But these are individual numbers and obviously the largest percent of those being in the high school that were dropped. And those are individual counts. It isn't that if they re-enrolled and dropped again, those are individual student numbers. Another piece of that that we look at, and and this was pre-COVID, so some of the numbers, and I just wanted to remind people and I just wanted to remind people again, because it does impact. And we looked at this with the high schools. The number of office referrals for those individuals that are chronically absent is significantly higher than those that are not, so they get into more behavioral trouble. And the GPA is significantly lower. It does have an impact on their academics and, and their outcome after that four years of high school and their graduation rate. And we're going to look at that quite a bit more and, and talk with Denise and Doug and be able to post some of those numbers of the graduation rate and the attendance and where some of that starts. So we're going to try to go more in depth with some of those numbers. Right now, obviously worried with finishing out the school year and the data of the semester test. But look at that through the summer to be able to give some of that information and where that may impact with the busing as well. But have that also for the middle school and the elementary. So it does have an impact on, on those students as far as their performance and wellbeing within the school. We do have, you know, a number of interventions that we currently utilize to highlight some of those that are also, because I don't mean to ever imply that our community is not supportive, our community is supportive. And there's a lot of things that they do, we just need to be, be able to put a refocus on the attendance of the students within the school district. And so as you go through some of those things, we have district attendance response teams, we have the automated calls, the SAT teams that go through with the tenants. There's also several things, mentoring is, is a big part of that, and we greatly appreciate the mayor's support in being able to match up mentors with, with our children to be able to get them to school and see that as a relevant piece. Our school resource officers, we've always been very grateful for that partnership. There's many other interventions that we have as we go through. A second page of those and, and just those individuals that are helping us to get our, our students into school. As we look at this and we, we try to focus ahead of what we can do, there's really four areas, and I'll break them down just a little bit and, and briefly go through them. But one, we have a responsibility, there's things that we can do. And we talked about part of that with the, the busing, what we can do as far as transportation, being able to resolve some of those other issues that they may have that may inhibit them from being able at school, that community engagement center where they can maybe go and get resources that they need, some of those mental health supports. So there's different things that we're going to do and go through and, and put our efforts into. Our local support, that's our community piece, the legal support, we need to be able to address some of this with, with our, our local judge and, and state's attorney, and then obviously with state law. So as you break some of those things down, our Sioux Falls School District efforts, I talked about a few of those. And we are, I've been meeting over the last month here with our, our social workers, met with them and, and met with the technology. So we try to automate some of this so that they're, they're notified, the parents are notified in a timely manner. But also to be able to help our social workers to be able to impact that at, at a higher rate of making sure that we get those individuals early in the school year in front of a, a state's attorney or a judge would need to, to be able to impact that attendance piece. Part of the local support, as I spoke on, the business partnerships, the city of Sioux Falls, the mentoring programming, they continue to enhance those and look for other areas that we can maybe progress that within our, our community. We also have the legal support, so working with the district state attorney's office, the courts, and really establishing again those expectations. We had done that five years ago, and we need to readdress that of what happens when they're diverted and what happens if it's not successful. Over a period of time, we had established there that within the 30 days, if it's not successful, they'd be back in front of the judge, and it'll no longer be a diversion. And that part has not happened that way. So we need to readdress those and see where the citation portion of that is gone and the failure to send in that whole overall truancy process. And then the state law, to look and see if there's things there. Obviously, the significant change that happened in that is, is if it's a non-violent type of crime, to not lock juveniles up. And, and I understand that, we support that. It's not in our best interest to have juveniles locked up. On the other end of it, we also realize that many of the individuals that are committing crimes in our community are not attending school. And if we can get them into the school setting, so there needs to be that common balance of, of how do we help to keep them in a school setting so that they do gain their education and they're not falling into that track of crime and being able to stay out of the juvenile justice system? Or the adult courts as they begin to get older and older. And part of that's going to be some of the changes in that law of what, what teeth do the, do the judges have when they're working with a juvenile? And what other placements can they do with those juveniles? The weekend retainer worked very well when we had that with our, our attendance schools. And that worked very well to, as an incentive for students to attend. The attendance rate with those individuals that had been habitually, chronically absent, when they were placed at that attendance school, went into the 90% range. As soon as that went away with the change of the law, it dropped back to under 20% as far as the attendance rate of those students there. So it no longer was, was, you know, affordable for us to be able to run that school. And then what other supports can we look at for our, our community? And so that's really an overview of some of the things we're going to be working on here to try to address the attendance piece of that and make that a focal point again.
Thank you. With that, so when that law changed, was that with the same time, was it 2016?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so I want to make sure I understood what the law, the change on that, on that. And so also, I think it's important for the public to know, like, so we appoint our own truant officers in our district, and they're typically counselors and so forth.
Social workers.
Social workers in our district, so that they understand that that's who are the people who are actually enforcing this, it's not police officers or whatever going out and doing this. I would be interested, Dr. Stavum has an interesting perspective coming from Nebraska where they have a different timeframe for when students are dropped from attendance, instead of being automatic at 15 days, is there a kind of an intermediary period and, and then they are actually dropped? Could you explain that a little bit? And I know we, we've started to talk to legislators, legislators about this because it's unfortunate, because once they're dropped off our rolls, what's our incentive to try to keep them still in our building if we're not receiving the dollars for them? So is there a way to have some intermediary for those students who might have an opportunity still to come back in or could be encouraged to come back in to do that?
There's a few layers to that, you know, back up to the law. And don't quote me on the law of another state, but what the layers are really is, for one thing, there's a, a student, some states have a student record system that talks to each other across districts. And then how you code the status of a student may be a little bit different. So the way this law reads, it talks about, go back one, I think, oh, nope, sorry. No, it was the other one that talks about them dropping.
Yeah.
Yeah. After the 15 days, keep going.
Oh, you're going to the 15 days.
Yeah. It, it reads that after that 15 consecutive days, they're not included in the count. And so it implies that then, in order to not include them in the count, you drop them off the rolls. And we've talked about how do we still keep them at a, kind of a held in a different status so they're not counted, but we keep track of them? That was referred to in a former state as eligible to re-enroll before they became a dropout. Here, it's a faster track to being a dropout. And so that's what we're trying to think about is how do we, how do we maneuver between that? Is it a change in the language of the law? Is it a change in our practice of how we code them so that they're not pulled into that date account? But we can still track that they're not with us until we know they are somewhere else. And that was one of the other keys in, in another district was they were held kind of in that eligible to return status until we knew they were re-enrolled. Now, after a period of time, they were completely dropped, but it feels a little bit different. So the bottom line is we want to be able to try to retrieve them and have them have the opportunity to re-enroll. There are districts that do, districts that do some other initiatives, some big pushes to re-enroll, they'll do some, some, you know, advertising, if you will, that says on Saturday morning, show up here, we're going to help you get re-enrolled, you can take online, you can do evening, whatever that might be. So I think we have a lot of different ideas that we can look at. The bottom line is we don't want to lose students. We want them to finish, we want them to graduate. And so that collective effort, whether it takes changes of one kind or another, is what we really have to keep our eyes on.
And on page 22, 21, I think, of your slide, it shows the Sioux Falls School District efforts. I think it's important to note too, that we have a lot of individual schools that do some positive enforcement mechanisms. I'm thinking of like Whittier, does the Whittier Way with the SROs that takes those students out, as well as, you know, some schools had like bikes that were delivered for perfect attendance and so forth like that. So maybe if we can bring some of those things even up to the high school level, because that obviously is our biggest level of, of absenteeism, if we can do that, great.
Part of it is being able to pay attention to it very quickly and, you know, kind of on a daily basis. So a lot of our schools are looking at some ways that they're going to track kind of that daily data and celebrating when they have the most kids there and looking at just kids being accountable in a different way and thinking about their own attendance as it relates to the whole school. I will tell you, I think it's, you know, Dr. Nold said when we were doing our feedback sessions, that's one thing that comes up over and over again. And I think part of that is because it's one of the things that is felt most deeply by teachers and staff and administrators, because they know how important it is, and it can be one of the most frustrating things that you deal with on a regular basis, because, you know, elementary kids don't drive. And they're at the mercy of adults who have to help them get to school. Same with middle schoolers. And there are so many different circumstances that play into it that it's never a one-size-fits-all in terms of the remedies that you can apply to fix it. But we just know with each passing day that there's, there are, there are more detrimental things associated with that. And so you also have that many people then who are willing to help with the solutions because it's that important. There are people that go out, they knock on doors, day after day, they give rides, maybe even when they shouldn't. They work really, really hard at helping families get kids to school. And that's also what I think makes it hurt more when you can't, because you just, you just struggle with that. So it's a collective effort, and we're going to work really hard on it.
I, you know, I would agree that complex issues take complex solutions and, you know, it's multi-layered and multifaceted. But then the day, this, this notion, both historically and statistically, based on research, it boils down to keeping students engaged. Keeping that, keeping learning relevant in the classroom.
Yeah.
And I think when we just hold on to what we've known all along, it will be serving our students really well. So Jamie, the work that you did on this and the story that it conveys for all of us to really listen to and understand is really important work, so thank you.
Any other questions? Sing none, any public input? Sing none, we'll move on to school board committee reports. Nan. Sorry.
Let me transition from that.
Big issues, now we're dialing down to committee work, which is so important. At three committees that met, the first one I'll briefly update on is the Sioux Falls Sports Authority. Summit League, we're still in negotiations. I just learned today, just a couple of hours ago, June 9th, our Summit League presidents will be meeting to discuss what it looks like for the contract for Summit League to, you know, hopefully be here in Sioux Falls. But we don't know that yet. Summit League is trying a new sporting event, or a new, excuse me, fundraising event. It'll be a boxing event, December 9th. Sioux Falls Marathon are, we're up 10% over 2019 numbers. They're still in the midst of recruiting about 800 volunteers to pull that marathon off for the city. Sanford International, it will be again at Minnehaw Country Club in September, and that will take 1,000 volunteers. We continue to monitor, we continue monitoring the fairness in women's sport issue that came up last legislative session, House Bill 1217. The General Counsel for the, for the Sports Authority has made it, you know, after reviewing that legislation, number one, it was poorly written due to a host of legal issues that would come up. Also, the, both the Summit League and NCAA have serious problems with hosting events in South Dakota because it is not in alignment with their policies. Granted, the style and form veto of collegiate athletes, but it still has that discriminatory language around K through 12 students that we're going to have to tackle. Summit League, Education Foundation, the Education Foundation met just yesterday, and I need to pull those notes up on my phone. Education Foundation, they awarded 108,000 in public school grants. In the fall, 35 out of 37 sites will be using grant-funded materials. Educators have already started receiving their supplies for the 21, 22 school year. Through the Student Success Fund, we awarded additional 3,000 to teachers to purchase lots of different things from crock pots to prepare meals for low-income high school students. And after we announced the grant, we heard from the United Way, that particular grant, they have a grant from DoorDash, so they'll also be assisting students with food delivery. Since January, we added about 160,000 to our endowment. Education Foundation will be working with our school district for the 150th anniversary celebration. We're making plans for summer, summer retreat that had to be postponed last year due to COVID, but we're getting that organized. Actually, right now, we're in the midst of it. And last, the insurance committee met. There's really nothing material to report, other than the claims are down, and we approved really a competitive insurance package for the employees and their families. So it's something we can be proud of as we talk about recruitment, retention for the best staff, hopefully in the nation. So those are my thoughts.
Again. Let's see, PATH Committee, we finally got discussed and I think made some good progress on the walkway to Ben Rifle. I thought maybe the Great Bear Ski Lift would have been a good idea, but apparently...
Chairlift.
It was too rickety and the safety concern was there, so the solution will be they'll take some buses from B&amp;G Milky Way and get them over to the Ben Rifle. I don't think I have anything else.
Thank you. Said she didn't have any reports. SELC did not meet because the Chamber had the Good Morning Sioux Falls event. Chamber, Iowa's out of town. Budget, we didn't meet. Southeast Tech, we had our meeting last week and it's not after this meeting today because budget had to be proposed at that time. But reminder, the Build Dakota scholarships are being awarded and the signing day is this Friday out at Southeast Tech, so that's an exciting day for those students up there. And then I mentioned juvenile justice, that committee's kind of re-emerged, I'd say. So it's a joint group between the county, the courts, the state's attorney, the JDC, some private partners, the school district, and they're looking at justice and truancy as their kind of key components of what things should be re-looked at. So it's good timing for what we're, we're looking at as well.
All right, we did not meet for policy. Nan talked about insurance. And then workforce development, we're having our first in-person meeting on Friday, so I'm kind of excited about that. They have a lot of things going on with summer activities and trying to get some different career and CTE type of camps focusing on middle schoolers, to try to get them engaged in, in different career activities. And then they're also really looking at how some of the activities they did last year when they had to convert more to those remote, using Zoom or even YouTube type of things that were highly successful, how can they take the best of those and still have some things in person? Because they know that, you know, those interpersonal skills and, and having that engagement is important in person too. So looking forward to a good meeting on Friday. That's all I have.
Thank you. If nothing else, do have a motion to adjourn. Second, have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Very adjourned.